Workshop to discuss the floodplain ordinance. For those of you who, for all of you who consented to have this, I think it's in the best interest of our city that we come to some conclusion about what we want to do. We have a meeting next week and if we can come get things hashed out and give it to Nick in a form that we can get ready then we can move forward with it. Everyone's aware, we voted to rescind the five hundred year floodplain. I think it's time that we define in as simple terms as possible what we want to do and where we want to go with it. So that's what this is about. This is a non-voting meeting. It is simply a discussion of what we want to do and I didn't turn my phone off.
Now, we got to do about all.
Hey, I started this meeting. But I'll take care of that. I have new phone and I don't have operations.
I know she got a.
Well, I got chastised to the point that that was, it was a.
Harry, Harry won't do.
And I really don't know how, I think.
I think that.
Turn it off.
Right side, right side.
You gotta hold two but, you gotta hold the two sides at the same time.
Those two little buttons.
That number, one side, the one on the bottom and then the one on the opposite side, hold them both the same time.
How about if I put your thumbs off?
He's gonna get some basic suggestions, cause it's live.
Alright, we're recording. So, I think, I sent in, when I sent that little email about asking for workshop, I sort of summed up what I thought was the important things for me. Let's open the floors. No orders, just, or Nick, do you have any, I mean, we've seen what you marked up based on what we talked about, uh, back in September.
Uh, I'll, two preliminary comments that might head off some confusion. The format and the document you have is a little strange because this is a floodplain ordinance that we've changed a couple times recently. And the parts that are the building code sections, uh, those are where it's strange because, uh, what we've done in the past is we've shown what we've changed in the building code so that any contractor would know right away. And this is different, I've got, I've got great opinion of this. So, in the document you have, there are changes shown that already happened last year and then there are highlighted changes which are what we would be changing now. So, it is a little confusing, like you might see a, a number of two point O or one point five that's bold and underlined so it's like, oh, that's the new stuff. That's only the new stuff if it's highlighted. The other preliminary comment, Gina and I just got together on this, I think we've got one instance where we accidentally left in through about the two or three feet layer deeper definitions we may have left in that five hundred year, um, height. We'll get rid of that. That's in design flood elevation, the definition there. That's not intentional, uh, but it does look like we probably.
Just a little cut. Cause it does represent, okay. Alright, uh.
And, and the part you, you, I don't, I don't, you know, I'm trying to say, what you're trying to say about the elevation, uh, that, that was on nineteen, is that what page, that's on the line, that's the main, that's what you said in here.
It's in, it's in the definitions, it's on page four.
It's on page four.
If you look at.
The one where it didn't get changed, it still references five hundred year.
Oh, I don't feel that, you said we're gonna get rid of it, what Gina was talking about before about the elevations, about the, uh, that, that was on nineteen, right?
That's. Yeah, the first thing I've talked about is.
Maybe nineteen.
These pages, uh, yes, nineteen, one of them, twenty.
Yes.
Okay, that's back to my, okay.
I'll, I'll clarify what I was talking about on the design flood elevation. On page four, which is your definition, uh, there is a definition for design flood. And it says flood associated with greater than the following two areas, and it gives an A and a B, well, A is straight forward, it's the, the one percent flood area, that, that's fine. B is where I think we overlooked something. So this area does designate flood hazard area on the community's flood hazard map or otherwise legally designated. We're still keeping the five hundred year shaded X areas as flood hazard areas. And I think what we probably did here is we incorporated that five hundred year level for design flood and design flood is used later on on some of the rules about how high you can build. So we'll, we'll fix this definition to get rid of that five hundred year reliance, but no, we'll, we'll clear that up and we'll run it through the state and we'll tell what we're intending to do and make sure that they agree that we've accomplished it.
So.
We'll do something to beat on that design flood.
Design flood elevation, I don't see anything that says five hundred year in there.
And that's why I missed it initially. It, it just says flood hazard area and we.
You gotta designate what it is and what is it.
Right now, at least the way we've got this set up, the five hundred year area, which is the shaded X area, we've gotten included as flood hazard areas but not for determining how high buildings or flood hazard area definitions or things like. Whether you need to, uh, have limits on, on the amount of building to put in. It's other, it's not, it's not the height of the building, but we potentially left the shaded X as, as flood hazard area. And because of that, we probably on design flood, um, accidentally used that five hundred year level on some of the rules later. Like I said, we'll, we'll either delete babe or change babe, we'll, 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 uh, make sure that we don't carry that five hundred year level for, for elevations.
So, I think Jerry, on page nineteen, you asked us where the areas, where we changed, that I think all of that, that's in yellow.
Yellow is the new stuff.
This is new.
New stuff.
And then you'll notice, uh, like on number, uh, R three twenty-two, point two, point one, under the second paragraph. Starts by saying in shallow area, shallow flooding, A O zones. As you read down, you'll see how there's some text that's highlighted and some text that's just bold and underlined. If it's bold and underlined, that means what we adopted that last year. If it's highlighted, that's showing what it is, we're thinking about changing now.
And then mill, and then millimeters, you just thought, I guess that's what that is. Did we just, instead where you, like in that paragraph, it says two feet and six hundred and ten millimeter?
Right, yeah.
Why did we put, I mean, did we added the millimeter?
I, I just did a calculation of what four feet would be in, let's see. Yeah, for, for instance, we can change two feet, we can change one foot to two feet. And it used to say three hundred and five millimeters and that's just what's in the floor.
Oh, okay. That's the format that you used before.
Normally I wouldn't include millimeters, but that's what's in the floor building code. So, I just doubled it since we're, we have two feet instead of one feet.
That's for the A O zone or the A zone?
Oh, I see what you're saying. We, we didn't put in the millimeter number before, we only said the number of feet.
Big, correct.
And I, I, I must have just added it because it looked like it was actually four hundred, uh, what's floor building's gonna ask, but that was probably eliminated in the.
The millimeter, what, my question to Gina, being she's here, or to anybody. On that section, just take that, the one we're talking about, paragraph two there, the, in the A O zone. How, how do you interpret in the A O zone, the elevation of a house?
Well, first thing about the A O zones is I don't think we have any.
Oh, that, okay. I didn't mean, that's why I was.
I'm almost, if, if there's one, I haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
So.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We don't have any A O zones in that too. We have undesigned A and we have A D, but.
Okay, well, that's, I was trying to think of, of the different zones and I wouldn't remember any ever saying an A O. But we have it in there because it is a FEMA recognized zone in other areas.
Yeah, and, and we could have.
And we could have one down.
You know, there might be a little tiny one somewhere that'll pop up that, that I just didn't have seen, so it, it could be there, but I haven't seen one yet. But I guess to answer your question, you know, based on this definition, um, it would be two feet above highest adjacent grade would be the.
And that adjacent grade could be road, surrounding lots, whatever?
Uh, highest adjacent grade would be the highest grade on the, on the parcel of land, not roads or anything else. Um, now, how do we determine that? It's gonna be based on a survey that they provide and.
So, so say for instance, down at the beach, uh, I just worked on a house next door, they got, they got some dunes that are five feet tall. So, in that dune, it just happens to be a free little dune, they'd have to go two feet above that five foot dune.
Well, they're in coastal, uh, coastal, coastline.
Uh, I'm not really sure where that is, that's.
It's all Jason and Holly Allen's house on thirty nine.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're seaworthy C C C L, so their elevation would be.
Well, they're kind, it looks, looks like they got a C C L on, it's outside of their closure to the beach.
The Al, Jason Al's, at the end of?
Uh-huh. Thirty nine. There's a, there's a rule of states down through there that are designated C C I.
The end of thirty nine, there's definitely seaworthy C C C L.
How far up thirty nine does that get, probably?
Probably three or four lots.
So that you understand them and anyone.
Yeah.
I mean, C C L line is all D E P regulated.
Right.
And, and they, we, they, we have to do what they, it doesn't matter what we say, they, we have to do what they say.
Right.
Right, yeah, that's regulated by, by the state through D E P and also.
Did you have anything else?
No, I, I'm just waiting on whoever wants to.
Okay, so, uh, after, after the other meeting, when we voted to make the floodplain a foot and a half above Crown of the Road, I did two things. Um, first, just I get it out of the way, cause it's, it's, it's a pretty interesting fact and I think that, uh, when Sally happened and we had all the twenty inches of rain and whatever, really showed us, um, true flood. Not storm surge or whatever, true, true flooding, I mean, we got a big rain event. Everybody knows how much rain we, it was going out of Eighth Street canal like, like the Colorado. Uh, so anyhow, I went around and I, I kinda got a count of houses and I didn't count all of them, but I counted most of the ones that are in my area over there where most of the flooding from Sally happens. You know, when it's, it's low over there, you know, flooded around the arm and all that, you know, the, the little federal park and all that. Anyhow, I counted all those, all the way up to Hatley, all the way up to three eighty-six, all the way to the end of our city. And from there back all the way to, um, Sabbath Street. Now, I didn't count some of the ones right up on the beach because some of the ones right up on the beach are an X and whatever, it's really kind of relevant. But anyhow, I went around and drove up and down the roads and made a count of four hundred and eighty-six houses. Now, this is just an interesting point. Out of those four hundred and eighty-six houses, three hundred and forty-three of them were below the Crown of the Road or at least below a foot and a half below the Crown of the Road. And if it was close, I gave you the benefit of the doubt and said they were above. Hundred and forty-three were above. Interesting fact, about the hundred and forty-three above, the majority of those were actually mobile homes and manufactured homes, cause they, they always get set up higher. So, there's a lot less chance of those type homes and everybody thinks those are the ones that are gonna flood, but they're, they were mostly up high. There's almost no chance that those would have ever got any of Sally water in. The ones that were getting Sally water in were slab houses and whatever, so. But anyhow, an interesting thing, if we, when we designated a foot and a half above the Crown of the Road, I didn't see any houses anywhere that would have any chance of having water in the house. They would have water in the yard, but they wouldn't have water in the house if, if they had all built to the foot and a half above the Crown of the Road. Does that make sense? You're looking at me like you don't.
I'm listening.
Okay, just, that's just an interesting point that, that I, you know, it made me feel better about our decision, that it was a good decision. All right, the, the, the other thing that I did, which was the most important thing that I did, was I got Gina to meet with me and we talked about. Now, let me give a, in her, just, just because, I have talked to Gina a lot about this. Gina has told me, and she reminds me on occasion, that, that she has no opinion about which it should be and she's not telling me how she thinks it should be. She just wants us to come to an agreement and then she can enforce whatever we come to an agreement, which is, that's her job and she's really good at it, but she does a great job. And so, this, this, my opinions have nothing to do with her opinions, other than she educated me on some of the issues. And I said, okay, so, what is in the classification, the shaded X classification? I said, what are the, what are the things that we need to take into consideration? And please correct me if I get off on this, but these are the notes I made. We had, we had some questions. Bobby had a question earlier about the, uh, the I C C, the increased cost of compliance for these people to build up, were they gonna get their insurance money? I spoke with Andy of hand in insurance where he told you guys this and he said, in his opinion, it's not gonna affect him at all because if they've gone up based on regulations that were in place before we changed them. He, he didn't see how any insurance could not honor paying that difference. They're still gonna get that through their insurance policy in most instances. It doesn't have to be in a classification. All right, there was the issue of having to have a permit to fill your lot, um, and you can only fill it by one foot and that's where a building comes at, right?
No, that's in your floodplain.
Okay, so that's in the floodplain, alright, so you can only, you can only fill one foot. And the reasoning that you don't wanna allow them to fill over a foot is the area that they are filling takes away from the volume of the floodplain. So in other words, the total amount of volume that that floodplain can hold, that's, you're taking away from that. So, if you go above a foot and you take, you're taking away unnecessary volume out of the floodplain.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Which I think is a good thing. I don't think they should be able to put in more than a foot. You need an elevation certificate in this classification. An elevation certificate, you need, uh, you gotta, you gotta do a benchmark elevation certificate and, um, that's just extra work for people to do. Extra slowing them down for them to be able to get their jobs done, to prove that you're at what elevation you are. I asked Gina how she did the X zone because X zone is not required to get those, correct?
Correct.
Because X zone is X zone, so I said, well, how do you know that they're a foot above the Crown of the Road? She says, well, I take my laser and I shoot the road and I shoot the house and I know whether they're a foot above or not. I said, well, so in essence, could you not do that to any of the others to kind of get an idea if they're a foot and a half above the Crown of the Road? And I think she said, it's like if we get a problem.
Yes, but not currently, because currently they're required elevation.
Right, but it, but if it weren't for that and we needed to know that they comply with our foot above, if we get away with that particular classification requirement, then it would be a relatively easy thing to do.
Yes, but you're not gonna know exactly. You're never gonna know that they're exactly a foot and a half above.
But you're gonna.
Just like you don't index, it's a.
Right, but you're gonna, you're gonna know if you're an answer, I'm in an answer too, more likely?
Probably more like.
Four answers.
I mean, I, you know, I, I, it's not, it's not an exact science out there.
But I have more faith in you with your laser than for it.
GPS accuracy versus survey accuracy.
Well, not even, I mean, I'm literally out there with a laser at a minute high, or you could be dumb as you can and that would be even more accurate. What I'm doing is not even GPS accuracy.
She's shooting, she's shooting a laser line and probably somebody.
Measuring up a foot off the Crown of the Road and shooting a laser to the finished floor, so that's not very accurate, is what I'm saying.
That's. Well, as a builder, that's pretty accurate. I, we do laser stuff a lot, but it's. As long as you make sure you're holding it up.
It's not survey, it's not survey grade, not many.
Correct. No, I'm not, and I'm not saying that just, okay, so, anyhow, that's a thing. Uh, there's still a need to elevate the garage bathrooms, put flood vents in, do, uh, that on say a garage or whatever, and you gotta have all of this stuff to do that as well. So, those were the major things that are in there and so, what I was, I'm saying, you know, we, we, we really, this is just, we're, we're so over-regulating. What we're doing by this classification, we've already dropped the elevation to a foot and a half above the Crown of the Road, what do we need all this other stuff for? I went and talked to Zach Childs yesterday to get his perspective as, as a realtor as to what people are saying about, were the sales picking up? Because we dropped the classification down to a foot and a half, he said, yes, he said it's, everybody likes that, it's, it's generated some more interest. He said, but here's what, he said, a funny thing is, is he said, there's quite a few people that are mad. And I said, well, what are they mad about? And he said, well, they're mad because we did this to begin with. And he said, I said, well, I, I'm sorry that, I hope they're not mad at me, I didn't do anything and, and I said, I hope that they understand that under the circumstances, nobody did anything that they thought was, there was, there was nothing done malicious. And nothing done without careful thought and time put into it, but I said. But he said, here's what I think, in my opinion, I think we should do away with the shaded X classification and go back to where we were, the foot and a half. He said, I don't have a problem with a foot and a half, I think that's a good thing. So, from his perspective, he thinks it would make the city build faster, be easier for people to come here and make them have a better feeling about coming here to build without that classification in all the ground. And you can see that it's just, it's just loaded with all this stuff, you know? That makes it hard to understand where you're at, so. And it's, it's a lot to study. It's brutal.
Okay, anybody?
And this, and this one, not he, I, I, this will quit, this, this is very confusing, I mean, everybody knows. And don't feel bad if they say if you, that's her opinion and not, she tells me that regularly. So it's not, nothing against you, she, she is here in Nigeria and I know, I know, this is not. Where, where does it have in here? I live out of a really high as a car. But where does it say, say in this, the fact that you have to get a sort of a elevation chart, is it, what does it say in this? And just while I got the hang, you tell me, Nick, Gina, Al.
Yeah, I've read it, it, it does require elevation, it's just, it's.
I don't know.
I, I either missed it or overlooked it or read it too fast or read, didn't think it was in that paragraph and didn't read it or something. And I thought it'd be inside claims and precautions, but I, but I, I, I'm just overlooked it again. Someone. I was talking about what Derek said about what he, what he liked to do, taking away, but I didn't ever see anything or something.
Yeah, that's the end of page fifteen.
Fifteen?
Maybe.
Well, I had thirteen, I had a good one.
Lowest floor inspection, economic inspection. I'm not sure that's the right spot for it to be.
Yeah, I thought that was when you mainly expected, made sure it's.
Lowest floor inspection.
So, page fifteen D, that's it, the bottom D.
Yes, D.
Well.
Lowest floor.
The certificate of elevation is on D one.
One and two.
Yeah, if a designed flood elevation is used to determine the required elevation of the lowest point, the cert, speaking, certification of elevation of the lowest floor, prepare and seal by Florida licensed professionals.
What does that mean when it says if a designed flood elevation was used?
The designed flood elevation, and that goes back to that definition, Nick was talking about earlier, it's, it's the base flood elevation plus a foot and a half.
Okay.
So, and it, right now, everywhere shaded X, A, all the flood zones except X, you're using a designed flood elevation, which is why we need a elevation certificate.
Okay.
Gotcha.
But now, if we changed the elevation and do away with the classification so speak, then we wouldn't need any of that stuff. All we need to know is foot and a half above Crown of the Road, correct, just like.
Correct, yeah, if you.
And it would make it way easier, a lot less, even though you can't get closer to the four inch, it's making a lot less people involved, a lot less regulation to it. A lot less cost involved in getting something with people.
Yes, it, it would be, it would be the less cost, less documents.
Less work on you either.
Probably more work on me.
Just because of the language.
Well, because of the, uh, Mario and I have had this conversation in the past, that there will come a time where we get lots of arguments about what is the elevation of the Crown of the Road exactly? And what is a foot and a half above that? And is that elevation of the Crown of the Road on this, you know, the east side of your property or the west side? Cause there might be a two foot drop.
I thought that that was handled by whichever way you access it through your driveway.
It is, but there still could be a drop across your site.
It could be defined as the highest point from property line to property line at the Crown of the Road, so if you're on a sloped road, it's gonna be up here. Versus, this is where the argument came, in a building over in Panama City Beach, there was a, a ramp that led up to Highway ninety-eight. And within the right of way, it was literally an extra two feet higher and that was measured from that point. So again, if we're gonna stay the Crown of the Road, it would really behoove us to define the Crown of the Road to be the highest point within the right of way and within the limits of the property lines. And then again, if it's a corner lot, it's still the highest point of whatever that road is, so.
And, and where you drive.
Do we want it to be the highest point or do you want it to be the, the median of the highest point if there's, it's a definition, so we need to define that because. Somebody that wants to build their house lower is gonna say that point of the road is the lowest point of the road, somebody that wants to push it to the highest points can push to the highest, somebody in between is gonna say to the median. She's gonna have to measure three times if it's, we're talking about the median, one time if it's the highest and once if it's the lowest, so it's up to y'all.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it can be.
What is your recommendation that you like to do?
To clearly define what you would like them to do.
I heard.
You know, that's why I put in there, that was a, a critical point about when you're gonna use the Crown of the Road, that, that, that the highest point, to me, has got to be defined as the highest point. From property line to property line, regardless if it's a corner lot or not. If it is, it includes, it includes, includes more roadway.
It includes more road.
Yeah.
But it's gotta be that the, that that is the highest point of any access to that property from a road.
Well, I, you know, I think you have to take the highest point of the road because you're defeating the purpose if you're using, if you're going around a corner of road.
Well, you're exactly right, but I think you know that that would be done if we don't define it.
You're exactly right, but you, I think you know that that would be done if we don't define it.
Yeah, but but if we define it as the highest, that makes it easier for her to.
Well, I I would think it would be, I think that would say, hey, this one.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, regardless, if it's if it's one foot in on the property line, or if it's in the middle, it doesn't matter.
And then they have.
No, where you, right.
The highest, and then but then they still have to prove that.
Yeah.
I mean, so they'll they'll have to show what what the highest point is and where it is taken.
Okay. Do you know the cost of getting the elevation certificate?
I don't.
I talked to.
Do you have a idea?
Four five.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, five hundred dollars, something like between, but but then, you know, it's it's the front end and the back end, so it's, you know, you gotta get elevation of the ground on the front end and then elevation certificate on the back end, so it's two different.
Yeah. I like you cheating that.
Two different documents, so.
Well, do you need, don't you need one, we gonna build on anybody?
But you saw.
Yeah, you you don't have to have an elevation certificate, um, in order to.
So it doesn't need a knowledge?
Yes, yes, and then if we if we talk about highest, you know, highest point on the crown of the road, they're still gonna have to get something on the front end that shows that, so that's not gonna go away. Uh, the back end elevation certificate would go away, so you'd really be eliminating one, one step in the end process.
And you're also making it so that it can be done in the form of a laser or a survey or.
Correct.
As long as it looks fair to the building apartments, I believe, so.
Yeah, yeah, but they'd still have to get that survey area on the front end to determine the highest.
Well, you know, how how buildings houses are on top, and and any ha- any builder that doesn't have a builder's level, you know, those call them transit, they're not transits, but you set up, most builders have them, and so make it a shot and give you a kind of thing, a letter. For or a letter in there, letterhead saying, you know, I've shot the highest part of the road out there on lot seven and on wherever, and the highest road elevation I found is so and so. I mean, would that work for you, and then you could, of course, if it didn't look right, you would know that when you went out there probably, you shot an elevation off of it, because you're gonna have to kind of put and have a level, the highest point that they designated.
Right, but now keep in mind, they don't call me until they're finished.
Yeah.
So by the time I get out there, it's too late.
Yeah.
You know, if if we could require them to call in an inspection before they, um, you know, an elevation inspection before they pour the foundation or as they're, you you know, they're.
Well, they but. I'm surprised that that's not required anyhow, because gee whiz, it's not required, right?
No, it's not required. No, I mean, there's an inspection for a a foundation, you know, footer inspection, but that's rebar.
Right.
You know.
And then typically, unless it's a auto looking for, um, you know, which is all worked at the same time, is that any different a lot of the quarter, the footing, the footing is probably different, because they can be able to stand on it or whatever they're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, we're not called out to do any kind of setback inspection or elevation inspection until the very end of the job.
Yeah, which is why sometimes they get in trouble.
Right.
They they leave it to the contractor, that's that's for. We can't, we can't leave it up to the contractor, we can't do that. I agree with that, I bet we need. That that's, I mean, we we gotta control our city, we're not, I we don't want, I don't want to rely on a contractor.
Well, I mean.
To tell us that, and you just said that they don't, y'all don't look at the setbacks prior to the construction of the house?
Prior to the construction, yes, on on the front end, on all the documentation, but we don't physically go out there and say, yeah, you've laid out the site correctly and you can proceed with your foundation. We don't have a setback inspection.
Yeah. All right.
Prior to construction.
All right, I don't wanna get on that, that, I don't wanna get away from this, that's that's another subject, oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's what we need to address, I like we need to.
Yeah, that that's the, I never, I, we used to, we used to go out there measuring strings and pull and see that they weren't, if it was, if prior to them, and when the battlements were up or whatever they had, if they had the corner staple or whatever, we we used to do that. I'm, oh yeah.
I I remember behind San Yarco, I was.
Yes, sir.
That place, that's built right, right there, yeah, they had good measure.
I mean, who do who do, who's fault is it if it's wrong, once it's built?
Contract.
Neither the contract or the surveyor has taken it.
I know, but the house is built, so what's the fact that you're? And what and what do you do then?
Well, we got one right now that just came before the planning is only last night, trying to get various.
Of course, that's our option, the house is built, they got, uh, they can't, what are you gonna do?
Well, I mean.
But anyway.
Yeah, let's let's.
Let's let's save that subject for another time and back to, uh, do we have a meeting for, uh, well, it sounds like, yeah, it sounds like that's not called, but, uh. Anybody else? Well, look, I I've got a couple comments, and I wanna say this with respect to every property owner in this city. But for several months now, I have listened to those that have come before us, either physically in this room, with multiple emails. About this floodplain ordinance and postal conversations. And the overwhelming majority of those people, this is not their real city, this is not their real home. I own a real home, I don't have an investment home, I don't have a vacation home, I don't have a second home, I don't have a rental home. And I respect everyone that owns properties. But I don't wanna build my house or my business or my neighborhood or my city to the bare minimum standards because it saves somebody else some money. Or it 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 expedites them building something quicker. And I've said this to some of them, because they're sleeping in a home, if my home's destroyed, my home's destroyed, I don't have a place to go. So when we're talking about the issue that we're talking about here, I wanna build our city to a standard that is what's best for our city and not someone else's pocketbook. I'm not, I I'm not willing to wanna do that. So when people tell me, well, look what it's gonna cost me to build this house, well, it's gonna cost me the same, but those are standards that I think are important for our city. Because it's where I live, and it's where I make a living. And I respect them and their and what they, that they've come here and invested in our town, but I don't wanna set our standards for their benefit. Because the people that I talk to, that this is their home, they don't mind paying to have what they think is 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 best for their house, for their real home, not the second home or their vacation home. So one of the reasons that I put in my email, or one of the things that I support, I support keeping the shaded X, I support keeping that map just like it is. And simply using the shaded X area, I don't disagree with Daryl, that there are areas within that shaded X that some could argue they'll never put it. But there's also many areas in there that are susceptible to flooding, and if we're gonna build our city back after Michael. I'm okay with setting some standards that give us the most protection that are just that is reasonable. I think the five hundred, I I I voted for the five hundred year because, or to to rescind it, because I think it's excessive. I think two foot above the town road in shaded X is a very simple change. It's easy to, it's easy to administer if we define the crown of the road. But leave the map like it is. Uh, it's too susceptible, the Gulf of Mexico and water coming over the highway isn't the major, that that's all, that is a truly a five hundred year event. But we do have those canals that open our, open ourselves up to that back flooding in the in the north side of our city. And I just think to get rid of the five hundred year and go to something that is so easily administered is the simplest way to give our people a good understanding. And I know that some could say, well, it's just six inches, you're arguing over, but in rising water, from a foot and a half to two feet in rising water, that's a significant difference, especially for the south side shaded X properties. So I wanna keep it simple, I wanna keep the administration of this floodplain simple. And if you do that, it still saves our people, anyone building, a significant amount of money because of the lower elevation. Compared to the five hundred year. If you look on the map and it's the shaded X area, Gina or whoever's sitting over there says, okay, that that requires X amount above the the crown of the road. You go fi- you define what the crown of the road is, where you're gonna shoot it from. And you move on, I mean, I it, I, am I oversimplifying where the dilemma comes in in front term for the administration, you don't, you don't change any other category. X has always been a foot above the crown of the road, it stays above a foot above the road, that doesn't change. The other, uh, A E, the ones we have the most of, A E and B E.
Yeah.
Already administered. I mean, they're already covered, how you deal with it. And then we have to address how you're gonna change, whatever the foot change is, you have to decide what we're gonna do for those that wanna build to the five hundred year. Versus somebody, once this is changed, that the required elevation then comes from the hundred year floodplain, well, they can't build as high as a guy that was gonna build from the five hundred year, because you you measure from different heights. So you got a townhouse that's built now, owner A, if you got owner B who wants to match him, we gotta make some allowance that he can build that height. Or he's gonna, he's gonna run out of, he's gonna run out of room and he can't match the height of the the one that built to the five hundred year.
That's right, he loses buildable height.
He he he's gonna lose buildable height if we go back to the hundred year plus X above the crown of the road in shaded X. If if we do that, because the required height, when you start measuring or the required mark on the on the pole for building height starts at the required height, well, the required height now is gonna be a hundred year floodplain plus either a foot and a half or two feet above the crown of the road. Well, when the five hundred year guy built, the required height was, it may have been seven feet.
Right.
So if he comes in after he's built, we're gonna have to give him the latitude to, I guess, I don't really know how you would word that, but we've got to somehow allow for those who choose to build to the five hundred year. That they be allowed, that that their building mark for thirty-two feet started at the five hundred year.
Here's that about somebody who would want to elevate their house, put cars under it, but isn't required to.
That's right, that's right.
But they're building it to the five hundred year, not just because they wanted to build it up higher, so keep in mind, there are homes on the waterfront that are built higher than the five hundred year because they were at eight feet, and if they got to nine feet, they could get the boat underneath it, so there is still some choice component, but that zero mark to start with thirty-two feet is what the code required to be.
And so they would lose, the required height now is gonna be a hundred year floodplain plus whatever we decide. And the people that have already built, that built it to five hundred year, they have a different starting point.
Correct.
So for me, that's why I think that the shaded X is important, I think it has value to our city, and I just would like to keep it as simple as we can and yet give people. I hate to use the word break, but give them a more reasonable floodplain ordinance, but I'm certainly not in favor of changing the classifications that are made that that's on the theme map, I think that is. I'm I'm not the man.
Is there a footage, can, is there a footage difference in referring to without speaking to, starting at one hundred to the five hundred year in loss of elevation, is there a? How how, I mean, is how variable is that amount of feet, depending on where you're at and what floods are there?
Yeah, it it can be five feet, it can be a foot, it could be a- anywhere from a foot and a half to, what do we have on the map, some someplace is six and a half feet. So it depends on where you are and what situation it is.
And and the areas that is.
The larger is gone.
Yep. Oh, they're, oh, they're, they're here, the 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 largest that you have here is six, six feet.
Okay, so. You just pointed the largest is six feet?
One of this end right.
Right, here at six feet and one right there at six feet.
Okay.
And again, this is in a, a, an A zone, and that one is in a.
Right.
Shaded X.
So that that's, that's essentially where, um, my guy is building his house, I think.
At home.
That's on that, across the house, across the road from the little houses, what we've all called the little houses, essentially.
That would be, that would be correct, that's that's in Paradise Park.
Yeah. Okay, and then up here around the.
That's the canal.
The canal, okay. Well. I don't, I don't know, is that, is that not something that we could do with a variance, if somebody got into that situation now?
A variance?
A variance to allow them to build up to their, to that, if they wanted to do the five hundred year floodplain? Because, you know, what my thought has been all along is, look, take, let's take these required elevations away from people, but any of those people that wanna build up, and they certainly can build up, but what what I wanted to do was to not make them build up if they didn't wanna build up. And so if they do wanna build up.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna make a breach, I just wanna make it where that if they do choose to, they don't get penalized in the height that they built.
I would, uh, have a good, I mean, I don't know how many people that's gonna be, you mean?
Proceeding to the house, well, I can wait for you guys.
Are you having a lot of requests for that?
We've got probably four people that have submitted building permits because they think this is gonna happen, and they wanna get in the system before it does.
Okay. Okay.
I've talked to Lance at S E, and they've got probably six people just sitting and waiting, um, not knowing what to do, whether to start redesigning their house or not, um, so it, you know, that's what it does.
And so it's based on, they're gonna, if if we're gonna change it, they're gonna go ahead and get a permit before we get it changed, and then in fact, so that.
Or they're gonna, they won't get a permit because the plan's already, but they'll at least be in the system.
Uh, and if they're in the system, then they can build up to that.
I mean, that's up to you guys, but that's kinda what I've been saying, and and at least if you're in the system, you have some kind of a fighting chance to say that you've submitted before the rules were changed, I mean.
That's normal, if you have an application then, and we haven't had a very clear statement that we're putting those applications on hold and we're gonna find the rules, that's.
Yeah.
So so is it, would it be, would it be an issue for us to allow those people to build up to that height in those instances, I mean, how how big of an instance would that, an issue would that be, Nick, for us to say, well, yeah, if you're gonna build to the five hundred, and you can go to that, you can use that?
Well, if we're talking about the the four people that are working on applying now, they'll get their application then before the rules are changed, it's gonna take a couple steps, so they'll accomplish what they're trying to do. If we're talking about some hypothetical, another ten, fifteen people out there, um, we would just need to design rules around that to allow it, I wouldn't wanna use a variance process for that, especially if we.
How would you go back to designing rules to do that?
Uh, well, the the rules about maximum height of your building, not not floors, but the roof height, they're in a different part of land development code, and we would, we would tinker with those rules and allow additional height for for people that were, um, building based on five hundred year levels. They don't have to go to the state, the state doesn't care how tall the houses are, they care how, they care where the floor is, not where the roof is.
So explain why we've got a height regulation anyhow, I mean, I understand why we do, give me a brief description, we can only build up to what height here?
The biggest, the maximum height anywhere in the city is forty-eight feet. The biggest, the maximum height anywhere in the city is forty-eight feet, and that's a little deceptive because you have to know exactly where the bottom is. But once you figure out where the bottom is, forty-eight feet's the maximum. Um, most areas are thirty-two, I think.
Yep.
And the background on that is just, I've, I've seen in action. The councils that I've worked with did not want tall hotels, big businesses, they didn't want houses that were just towering over things. Especially, we have so many properties in the city that are twenty feet wide, and if they're sixty feet tall, twenty feet wide, you got, you got an interesting dynamic there. But that's up to the council, and that could be changed, but that's always.
But that's something we can do outside of, outside of flood issue.
Right, the flood is, the flood rules are basically where the floor is.
Do what outside?
The, the height requirement.
We don't wanna change the height.
I'm not saying to go up, what I'm saying is allowing them to go up to what people, what their neighbor may need, is what you brought up.
Well, I just brought that, now that the, sort of the horse is out of the farm on the five hundred year, some of those buildings now that are built to that. Townhomes especially, where they built one and the, and the next one wants to match up to him. If we change it and he gets, he gets required to build it the hundred year.
We, we can write a rule that would allow that, but I think we should keep it out of the floodplain rules.
He can't do that.
So, we could write a rule, it'd be a fairly simple process of writing a rule to allow those specific kinds of cases to match up to their neighbor.
We, we could, we could figure out something.
Well, not those cases, excuse me, but anyone that chooses to build to the five hundred year floodplain.
Right, and it would be, it would be to, make it simpler for folks if they want that, we're really talking about parking under their house. It gives them a better opportunity to do that because it's not gonna always count as their maximum height.
Right, okay, right. But, we could handle that outside of flood.
Right, floodplain rules are about where the floor is. We're now talking about where the top of the building is.
And we don't know how, we don't know how many we're gonna have, but it looks like we might have dozens.
We have no idea how many we have.
Yeah, so, but we, but we could handle it outside of what we design, design.
It, it would be simpler to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the, the state is nervous when you change rules in the model code if they want to have a change under work. They don't care what we do about our building heights, our building heights are already pretty low, so, and add a little bit here and there, state in character.
Well, I think, you know, some of the stuff Alan spoke to, that I, that I totally agree with. Trying to keep the character of Mexico Beach as much as we can, like it has been for years, and of course, that's changing slowly and you can't stop that, but. You know, I don't, I don't want, I don't want this to be destined, and all those realtor buildings and all that stuff, so, anyhow.
Well, that could be addressed in the, they're separate from this, because you're right, it's not addressed in the floodplain, the height.
And in fact, right, but actually, as I'm thinking through it, a lot of those heights are also stated in conference and plan. So, we have to change those as well, but again, the state's not gonna mind if you allow somebody an extra ten feet, they just won't care.
Okay, good, well, I didn't think about it till you said that, this deals with the bottom of the house, I never thought of it, but you're right, they're nowhere near your destiny, not the height of the building. So, uh. Let's get back to. Am I the only one that is interested in it being two feet above the crown of the road? For shaded X?
I'm happy with what the house.
Uh, I think we need, we do it a lot by cha- changing to the hundred year plan. Uh, I think we need to keep shaded X, and I'm not against a foot and a half, I'm not against the two. I think we need to keep shaded X, and I think we need to make sure that whatever height, not height, but the elevation of problem is kept. Uh, only because, not only because of the person building, the person deciding. That all needs to stay the same. We gotta look out for everybody, not just somebody that won't be able to.
Well, I, you know, me personally, I think we've pretty much handled the issue. But, again, when I rode around and looked at, I mean, just so, I mean, dead even with the road or below the road. Um, those are the ones that get flooded. In a, in a true flood, I mean, we're not talking about storm surge or wave action, I mean, that kinda jumped to those houses back there. But, by doing the foot and a half, we've eliminated. I don't know of any place that would not. Be out of the water, so to speak, by going up a foot and a half. I mean, and, and granted, we're, if, whatever change we make, there's still a bunch of houses, bigger than on the Sally, are gonna have water in their house. Because we're not making them build their house up, they're, they're in their house and until they, somebody builds it down and tries to meet the new code, they're gonna be below the road, but.
Yeah, that has to be handled by storm. But the best we can do is storm or drainage and have a map, we can't, we can't change.
Right.
And in some cases, we can't help them no matter what we do.
Right, exactly, and, and we do that, you know, I, I, we just, I really wanna work on the storm drains, I don't know what you can do. I, I try to tell everybody that, that I work for, look. Florida's level, essentially. Florida don't run very far on level ground. And so, you know, this is not an easy, it's, you can, you can put little inverted swells in between each lot and, but where's it gonna go? It's gonna stay in the inverted swell until it gets into, if there's an inverted swell ditch line on the road, until it evaporates or trickles off somewhere, but, so anyhow. My, my opinion is, I wanna do a way with the classification, I wanna, I wanna do a foot and a half above the crown of the road. I think we need to address the issue for Gina, on Gina's behalf, to say, we need to work out a, a situation where we say. Here's how you determine which part of the road you gotta use. I agree with that, I think we need to work that out. Um, and I think that, I think that we ought to leave that to the builder to say, whoever's building the house or the homeowner, if they're building it. They on their letterhead say, I have shot the elevation of where the house is going and all of the surrounding grounds and roads, and here's the highest spot. And I think, I think we can handle it that way, and then she can check it with her laser when she goes out, so. I, I think the only requirement that we need to do is a foot and a half above the crown of the road, do away with the shaded X. Because there's just stuff in here that's. It's just bureaucracy. By going up a foot and a half, we, we have taken everybody, essentially, out of.
Let me just actually, shaded X, all of that is green, that's nothing more than six inches more than what we have. Because that would all then become X. You think that's all that's necessary? And all of that green area is just?
Yeah, I do, because like I say, I mean, I, you know, I, I, I'm not just guessing, I, I rode around, Al, and I'm just, I rode around everywhere. I mean, I've been all, in my business, I'm all over this city, all the time. I've been, I've been down every road, every road, and I rode down all the roads that were the real issue during Sally. And made tabulations and if we're a foot and a half above, nobody's gonna have issues with flood. Unless it's some kinda, if, if we have another Michael and it sits, sits here off the coast for a couple of days like they've done at Texas a couple of times. It don't matter what we do, everybody here is gonna be galling underwater.
Well, we're there now, we've, we've, we've been galling underwater, we're trying to build back to what it might, you know, we, we wanna build something back that gives us not a Michael. We can't withstand a Michael, we know that, that's all.
Yeah, and I think that's what we're doing.
But with more water storm in our area on the coast, I am definitely against removing shaded X from the map and making it all X.
Well, you, I mean, we've already done that with a foot and a half.
The, the main difference is regular X is one foot above the crown of the road, and shaded X is eighteen inches.
No, and it's all.
So we've gone, so we've gone six inches above, we've gone six inches above what's required here for the X.
That's why I think two feet is better, and I, and I'll be quiet, because y'all know, two feet for me. I, we need to just have a consensus so we can move, get, if, why don't we just decide different things? First of all, I guess we ought to back up, is there anybody else wants to do away with shaded X? Just, just take all the green and make it just go. Shaded X. Well, that's what it would do, I mean, that's what you would do, you would, if you removed the shaded X, that would, the hundred year floodplain doesn't recognize shaded X.
It was all X, right? I mean, that's, I'm like, yeah, you're right, that, I mean, that's why.
It was all, it was all X.
All X, and then you built.
And then, and then FEMA came in and made the green, and we, and we adopted that map as the shaded X area, which rec- which recognized, then it is a flood hazard area. And, so if, if we, if we, by classification, remove shaded X, everything green becomes that color right there.
And as far as the insurance company is concerned, it's all black anyhow. Because they don't, they don't recognize shaded X as being in a flood zone any more than they do X.
No, no, I, I'm just thinking that, no, I, I just make sure that we understood that's what happened.
Uh, in my opinion, which I got note from all three of them, few of them. What, what, what they want, I don't know what I missed sharing to get it get, so. I think that's what we all at least say, but, but it, it was, in my opinion, which is. Scary sometimes. If this was, if this was black, this was X before FEMA turned it to.
Before the new map.
New map, and turned it to shade, uh, shaded.
Shaded X.
Uh, now, with us, we, and this was a foot above, I'm probably at the hundred year, like now we want, we proposed, uh, eighteen inches.
Well, but Darrell's saying he wants to remove shaded X. He wants to remove it.
I, I know, I got him, a, a bottomless keep shaded X, okay, but what I'm saying is, and, and if we, if we remove the shaded X. I'm trying to say what everybody says and get an opinion here, and, and put it eighteen inches above. It was a foot. It, it used to be a foot with the hundred year plan. Now, we are proposing eighteen inches and you are two foot. Bobby told it, it killed its way, went on to eighteen inches or two foot. But, if this was X and we raised eighteen inches, then, then in my opinion, that would be enough to raise it up. And, and, and to still get rid of shaded X. Because it was a foot, so we raised it up six more inches.
So would you want all Xs to be eighteen inches instead of just shaded X? Because if we got rid of shaded X, they'd all be the same.
And, and, I, I see what you're saying.
Changing all this into eighteen inches is, is better foot. All that.
See, that's the whole back on me, right there too, it, it's, it's a, it's a, if you change everything, I'd say that to get, and, but this is already a foot. I'd say, well, we could keep it foot, but that's when it gets. Let's, let's see.
Well, if you change the classification, you gotta have, you can't have different, you'd have to go identify which lots then would be a foot, I mean.
That's, that's what I'm saying, I mean.
It'd get very, pretty complicated.
Well, a compromise for that situation between your point and your point would be, the compromise would be a foot and a half. Because he's saying if it goes all back plaque, it was a foot, everything stays a foot, you're saying everything should be two foot, so a foot and a half is.
I don't think X should be any more than a foot above the crown of the road.
Yeah, but you're only talking, you're only talking six inches, so, six inches, I don't think's gonna.
What you're talking about changing the whole area. You're trying to talk about changing.
See, I, I just, I, in, in, in my philosophy, I totally disagree that shaded X is not a flood hazard potential area. If, if you wanna do away with it. I just, I just, this, it might block this, that green area is a definite area that deserves more than this area. Without question.
Well, I mean.
I don't know why we want to go back to what we have, I just.
We, 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 we're really going.
We're going, we're going six inches higher, well, you're changing that, you're not going back, you're changing.
Could we not, could we not? All the X now, and all which is shaded X, doesn't make a proof of shaded X to be a foot and a half.
Well, I. I know, this is crazy. Nor any city would make that, and I think, I don't wanna change X, I think it should be approved.
Well, we'll leave these people and get shaded X, make it a foot and a half. We've, they've locked that off from what they were in the five hundred year plans. These people don't deserve having a big challenge.
And I agree with that, Mark, I follow that, I agree with that, but, I don't think I'm getting my point across, which is, I don't understand what that was there. But, I, I think, I think, I don't think we should mess with X. But the shaded X, I, I, I feel, I believe it needs to be a foot and a half, and then I look, we really need to keep shaded X. That's what I'm calling between, if you're gonna, you're gonna raise it a foot and a half.
But the thing about it, if you take this and make that shaded X into X, and you make, make it a foot and a half, these people over here are gonna have to go up. That, that's why.
Well, Al added attention off of us, but, I mean, we're just.
Well, I, I'm, I'm trying to protect everybody in the city and not just, okay, this person wants to build here, so these people ought to be penalized. I'm not, I'd say that such shaded X is gonna give people a break from the five hundred year plan to a hundred year plan. But it's gonna help protect the people that's in X don't start with. That's why I say we need to keep the shaded X in there. It's trying to work for the whole city is what I'm trying to do.
And who determined what was shaded X?
People.
See, this is the latest map with X.
Okay.
Every, they, they use the term every ten to twelve years, they supposedly come through and reevaluate your city with a map. Michael. We, we knew we were on the list to get an updated map. We didn't have it at the time, but it came out, what, six, eight months after Michael, give or take. And this is the latest version of the FEMA flood map based on their criteria. And it's, it's just a model, it, I mean, it's not, it's not a exact science. But in this case, I think it's very representative of our community, given the, given the amount of water that's surrounding.
There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of damaged houses still in the X area, I mean, there, how much stuff needs to be rebuilt in the X? Relatively, there's not, Gina, do you know that? There's not a ton of stuff to be rebuilt, it's not already being rebuilt or been rebuilt in X, because it wasn't managed that much. Right?
Yeah, I, I understand, there's a lot of damage that, things like that, um, I, I hear a couple of things going on. First off, we're talking about changing the map, we're not changing the maps, that's a FEMA map, it's staying the way it is. So that map will not change, no matter what decision you guys make. Second thing is, this ordinance that Nick's put together has eliminated the elevation, or that Nick has marked up, that we've all marked up. Has eliminated the elevation requirements for the shaded X flood zone. But it keeps the designation of the se- shaded X as a flood zone in cities in Mexico Beach. So, but it also writes into the L D R, the new elevation requirements of the shaded X, which is a foot and a half above the crown of the road. So, we currently still have a designation of the shaded X as a flood zone in Mexico Beach. If you eliminate the shaded X from the floodplain ordinance completely, then you eliminate it from your floodplain. It's no longer a flood zone in Mexico Beach. So all of the stuff that you like, Darrell, about it goes away, all the stuff that you don't like goes away, it all goes away. And, and that can be done without affecting X. Because the elevation requirements are already written into the L D R.
Okay, so what you just said, let me make sure I understand what I think you just said. We could leave the designation with shaded X, because FEMA made this map, and we're not gonna change that there now.
And how are you changing it?
We didn't use that shaded graphic.
We use that as a graphic.
We don't have to use it, we'll use the map as that.
Now, so, we could go in and say, okay. We have a clear determination of what's shaded X and what's X right now. Why can't we just say that we're not gonna do anything in the shaded X except for we change the elevation to a foot and a half above the crown of the road? Can you not do that?
You can, you can eliminate the shaded X from your floodplain ordinance completely.
As far as a classification?
As far as a classification.
It's still, we're still gonna have a map. People can come by there and they can say, I'm in this green area right here, so my elevation's gotta be a foot and a half above route.
Yes.
And anybody, and they see the black and they say, my elevation's a foot above the road.
Yes.
And we can handle the height issue through a different kind of situation, according to what Nick says later. That would give those people the ability to build a five hundred year.
Top of the building.
The, the top of the building, not the bottom, right? And handle that.
Yes.
That, that's the perfect, that's perfect for me. I'm happy. Can, can we go on?
No.
That, that's.
Well, you forced it to make, you missed the part that you, 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 by either choice, what she said, that you're also gonna lose. Go ahead, say that part again.
You're, you're gonna lose the, the fill requirements.
Right.
That are stormwater related, that are very important.
Okay.
You're gonna lose the breakaway walls, which are very important, especially, particularly on the south side of ninety eight.
But now wait a minute, if the breakaway walls, those are wave related, breakaway walls, right?
Correct.
Now, in those areas where you're gonna have wave related stuff, aren't they under a different. Classification anyhow?
Uh, your V zone is and your coastal A zones. But if you look at that map, there's a lot of stuff on the south side of ninety eight that is not in an A zone or a B zone.
So.
That was hit by significant wave action.
Okay. Well, I, I, I think, you know. A- as well as you just know, because you said, that was my thoughts. My first thoughts were, keep the fill, keep the breakaway walls. For anything south of highway ninety eight. That, that takes care of anybody that's gonna have wave issues. With wave issues, you're not gonna get wave over here.
Yeah, you got mindless.
Uh.
You got mindless.
Yeah, I think, I, I think, well, uh, nevermind. I'm gonna let you, you know.
Go ahead. Excuse me for a minute. Okay.
Would we be penalized in any way from FEMA, receiving funds, if we do not go by. The X and the shaded X and this map that they made after Michael?
In the conference call that we had, they said no. They, we suggested that we write a letter to them to get that in writing. That letter was sent to them on the first of October. I talked to, uh, Lita on Friday, and she said she is still waiting. A response from everyone else. Doesn't mean that it is changed, it's just.
They haven't sent it.
They, they haven't sent it back. But.
I think that's important.
From the conversation that we've had so far, they're saying, the answer is, it will not change if we go from the five hundred to the one hundred.
I'm talking about changing the shaded X and the X and all of the, that, that FEMA made this map, saying that was shaded X.
I'm about going from five hundred to one hundred. I, the, the, the map, I don't know, has anything to do with that above.
Okay.
We ask, going from five hundred to one hundred, does that have a change?
Different ways to say the same thing.
Okay.
Shaded X is five hundred, X is one hundred.
What he said in that conversation was, they would not fund any building municipal like fire, rescue, any of those kinds of emergency type buildings. If we put them in a five hundred year flood plain. And I said, that's not a problem, cause we've already designated an, an X area to build those kinds of things in. So. He said, we won't lose any funding. If in fact, that's how they come back with their letter. But he was not, he, he was not a guy that struck you as need to go ask anybody. He was, he was pretty adamant about it. I think it was pretty straightforward. As a matter of fact, he clarified it for us two or three times. So, I don't imagine it's gonna happen. They're gonna say. So where are we now?
Well, if we're gonna do away with the shaded X category, not the map, you're right, but if, then that's gonna change, that's gonna create. My thought was, we were coming here to keep it as simple as we could. Removing the shaded X out of this. Flood ordinance changes an awful lot of things. That I would hope we all would think would be important. To just change, to recognize it as a designated area and put a footage above the Crown of the Road. Is a, is a rather simple change for our people. It's a simple change for the administration. It is definitely a win-win for the, for those that are building in terms of height elevation financially. But it still recognizes that. There are things in it, in the shaded X that have to be done, that Gina just referenced to. And it seems the simplest path to me. And then just define what it is that we want, just make sure that the definition of the Crown of the Road is a defined, you know, is clear. Not by contract, I hope. On any kind of letterhead, on any kind of contractor, but by our building法. And other than that, I, I'm good. I think we made. I think what we voted on back in September to get rid of the five hundred year. It's just that it's gonna take a while. It, it, I mean, you gotta, that's gotta, still gotta go to the state. Uh, and it's not like, at next Tuesday's meeting, hopefully we can vote to ratify and have Nick, from this meeting. Give some direction on what it is that, that he'll come back with in this, or what we say that will get changed. Or altered, or edited, or whatever, from what we have now. And let's move on. But if we wanna change that category, that's gonna require a significant amount of, of alterations in this.
It'll take some editing. Uh, uh, if we can do it, it won't be drastic. It'll change the definitions, it'll change.
But it'll change.
But it'll change the impact.
It, it'll change the impact of, of the, these folks that, that are building.
Yeah.
And to me, they won't be, that, that, they'll be in the. We'll be going back for a coastal community that has, that's experienced, what we've experienced, to just simply go back to what we had. That's what we did. We just go back to what we had.
Well, not truly going back to what we had.
Well, six inches above Crown of the Road. All that other stuff.
Put down, put down.
When, when, when we read that.
All that other stuff, y'all.
We would read last meeting, uh, the, not last meeting, whenever we talked about this. I went to, going back to the hundred year plan. Keeping the shaded X a foot and a half. I thought that was a good, simple way to do it. It's helping the people out. And the more we argue about changing this, from what we already agreed to change too, the longer it's gonna take to get it done. And I think we need to get some done. So I, again, I'm, I'm going back to hundred year plan, keeping the shaded X a foot and a half.
Alright. What does everybody else think about that?
One more question, and then I'll, I'll, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of halfway. I'm like, I'm, I think, and I'm like you, and I think we need to go, but I sure want to. Make sure we do this right for these people. And Nick, you said something. That if we did go, when Darrell was talking about going, it would take a few more days, but we could do it.
As far as making the changes in the way? Yeah, we, we can, we can make that work. We don't have it now.
I, I, I know, I know the impact. I know what it'll do, but it, but it could be done. True. I mean, that's, that's what you said.
Yes, it, it's still got Thursday review, and it would still have some steps, but we can write it that way.
Mama said it'd be days, like.
Well, the impact is much, much more important to me than it is the number of days that it takes to fix it.
I, I, and I, and I agree with you.
Going back to what we had, Darrell, and we can argue this, but we are going back to exactly what we had except for adding six inches. To the elevation. That's, ev- everything else, we're, we're removing everything that this, that Gina talked about in the requirements for the construction of the halls. And I just can't imagine that, I'm not interested in going back to what we had. I'm not doing that. I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I mean, that's. And, I'm not, I'm sorry, but that is exactly what we're doing there. We're going back to what we had, plus six inches. That's all we're doing.
You know, my, my. My first plan after I talked with Gina that last time was, okay, and I talked to, I talked to a couple of engineers and other people. And there was stuff in here that we definitely should keep, like breakaway walls, like the one foot of field. I think those are good. But, the rest of the stuff is just over governing. So for me, the perfect way to do it is to say, everything south of highway ninety eight. If they build on, on pilings, they have to have breakaway walls. Everything else, we, if we keep it, if we use this map, everybody in green knows they gotta go a foot and a half above the road. Everybody in black knows they gotta go a foot above the road. And, and any of those houses can only put a foot fill. That, to me, is a simple way to get the good part of this classification and get rid of the needless part of this classification. And, and again, to do the best job to protect the citizens without overreach, I think that's, to me, that's a perfect way to do it. Do you know of any places really that come to mind? Outside of the south of highway ninety eight that would have wave issues?
I can't answer that.
Yeah, well, I mean, you said you had wave issues.
I had six foot of water go through my house.
Yeah, was that?
That's a wave issue. I'm sorry. Now, whatever we do. We need to make this last. We don't need to keep these citizens bouncing back and forth or whatever. But yes, I seen the destruction. I lived through it.
That was your body.
I want the people to build as fast as they can, but I wanna be safely too. So I, I'm giving a lot to what we were talking about. Shaded X, foot and a half, hundred year plan, good, let's do it. But let's get it where these citizens can start building and get that thing going. And not going from one time to another, and one change to another. Let's make this final flat and get those away.
How many do we have that agree that, I mean, do, or is there, is there some of us here that are thinking that we're good with what Bobby just said, hundred year, foot and a half? Keep, keep the map, keep, keep the rest, the designation. So, I mean, I, that's pretty simple. I, I'm good with that. I, I, that's just simple. I, I like simple and I don't like. South side of the road, north side of the road. I mean, there's water, there's potential. I, I like it, I like it the way Bobby said. I'm good with that. Anybody else?
I like both of them. I like the way Darrell said it too. But, and I understand Bobby, but what did you, can I ask you a question?
Good.
When Darrell said what he wanted, what, what, what did you like?
I don't like, I don't like south side of the road, north side of the road. I don't like that, trying to write in. Pick out the areas like, except on the south side of the road, if you build up so high, you gotta have breakaway walls. I don't like that. Cause there's areas, in my opinion, that are not on the south side of the road. And some of the low lying areas that are still shaded X that need to do that. That need to do that. I don't know why we won't start breaking our town up, because I don't see it. It's a north and south issue. When you look at all that water and the potential that what happened?
Where's your house right now?
It's him.
I, I, I should, but I, I can see what he said and I can see what you said. I just hope, you know, he wants the water side.
Yeah, well, there's.
And then you want everything.
I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at what I think is best for everything.
I can see.
Twenty nine, twenty six, seventeen, fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You don't.
Hard to see upside down.
It ain't that hard to see. Don't look.
Don't look.
That's probably.
That's what my house was.
You're in the black?
No, I'm in shaded X now.
Nice. So you're just outside that little black area?
Yeah.
Now, what is the blue area? What is that?
Right. Hey, if you look. It's from a shade or city, that's.
That's what I'm saying. What is the wood?
A E.
A E.
A E.
That's, that's wood.
A E.
A is, it, where, A E and A O is wet, and then the grain is shaded X, which is it. It looks a lot better.
Well, that, that was out there.
What you doing?
Pretty well get most of it.
Okay.
I, 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 you know, just.
Well, if I keep pushing this on and on and on, which.
No, I don't wanna, no, I want it to be over. I'm with you, Bobby. I do. I want it to be over. There's people waiting right now.
Yeah, we need to, what, decide something. And I think the simplest way is gonna be the best way, uh, to simplify this thing. And, and I'm gonna have to agree with, uh. Well, I understand what you said, Bobby, and that sounds the simplest to me. But then I see what Darrell says, but. I don't know what all would change if we changed it, all of the shaded X to X. That's what I don't know. Exactly what would change.
It would change a lot of the elevation. Well, what I'm worried about sometimes too, on, on people getting, going back and building whatever, is what happens to the neighbor.
Right.
We, if we keep it uniform in there, it's gonna be a. You know, we, we had, and there's just several places, I can show them out, where people build up in their area. And just flooded up in the neighbor.
Yep. Okay.
So, this, this, to me, it is just, this thing is pretty simple. That's the reason I agree with the last time where y'all was talking about it. First off, I was, I, I wouldn't, uh, I, because of what happened to me, I'm thinking, well, ma- maybe we need to stay at five hundred. But I understand people building. I was able to rebuild lines though I had insurance, cause a lot of people didn't. I understand that. So I say, okay, let's, let's, let's go back to the hundred year plan. But let's keep it a little safer. Let, let, let's make sure we got the right elevation, uh, certificates or whatever. Don't penalize people in the X zone by changing everything else. If we keep it like, as, as we agreed to. To go with the hundred year plan. Keeping the shaded X a foot and a half, everything else, basically, it's gonna be the same. People in the A E's gonna have to build up at their heights and all the types of, the coastal lines, gonna have to do exactly what it's supposed to do. Through the cu- coastal construction line. You know, and we're good, we can get this done, we can get it written out, we can get down to Florida, and we can get these people where they're building. But we gotta, go, go through all this, we gotta get through, let's say, Florida.
Right.
We'll be able to get back. And the more we, you know, push this to that, but it's fine, as long as we go back.
Okay, so in essence. If. If, if I compromise, I'm assuming, and leave these two or three things in here that are just useless, bureaucracy as I called it. Because I'm for breakaway walls.
Well, now, the one thing I'm saying, the coastal lines, gonna have to have breakaway walls.
Sure, and the ones in A E.
It, it, it's nothing we, we can say.
I understand that. I understand that. But if, as long as everything green. Alright, really simple. If somebody goes in. They're a builder or the owner and goes in and they look at this map and they go, okay, so if I'm in any of these black areas, my elevation's gonna be a foot above the road. That's simple, right?
That's the hundred year plan.
That's hundred year plan. Any, if I'm in any of these green areas, I'm a foot and a half above the Crown of the Road, and we've got, and we've got to designate for. That's the hundred year plan, any, if I'm in any of these green areas, I'm a foot and a half above the crown of the road, and we've got, and we've got to designate for her in paperwork somehow, where she knows, that they, they give us a letter and say, I've shot the grades, here's the highest part of the road.
What, 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 or the highest grade, a, a joint is that way foot.
We need to put whatever it is, whatever y'all want it to be.
Yeah, but it, it's not what it's saying, is it? Isn't that what it said?
For, for X and for shaded X, what we're looking at right now involves Crown Road or firm.
Just so the Crown Road is defined where it's shot from, and the building department is responsible party for it.
Verifying it.
Verifying.
Right, I agree with that, so, foot and a half, if you're in green, foot and a half above, verified by the building department. And the, the owner, or the builder, contractor, whoever, is still gonna shoot it and say, here's what.
We don't care, I, I, I.
No, they don't matter.
We don't care, they can shoot it however they want.
But, but, but they have to verify it. And in order for you to verify it, before they start, we gotta change something, right? Or you've gotta change something, you gotta do an inspection priority that you have to do it.
Yeah, if, if we want to verify elevation and setbacks, I mean, that's kind of a different issue, we can discuss that, how we wanna do that, but yeah, it'll.
But we can make that happen.
Yeah.
Okay, outside of this discussion.
Absolutely.
And, and, and it, and we can make that happen, okay, so then, so then, even though it's got a couple of things in there that I think we should take out, I'm happy with saying, let's go take them out, if, as long as we're a foot and a half above. We've gone plenty high enough to save people from a salting type of event. And the X is easy to understand, but on the map, it's black, foot above, green, foot and a half above, to the highest part of the crown, and, and then the classification states, is that what you're saying, Bobby?
Yeah, pretty much, so, all you, all you have to do is touch up a little bit of stuff, what you said about that first meeting.
The first definition.
We can have it ready to look for.
So we got two issues, the issue with her verifying, which she says she can handle pretty easily, and I don't know if she has to give it to you.
We're already adding language about how much height above Crown Road, we can tweak the wording there, so, just to say, that needs to be verified by city building department.
Okay, and then, you can also fix the height issue.
For the.
For somebody wants to build a five hundred if they're in here, to match up and get that height, we can handle that through.
Well, more, that's not part of the floodplain ordinance.
I know, but, but that, that handles his, his question about it while we're, we had that discussion, I'm just trying to say that we can finalize that too.
We should be able to that, uh, quicker, even though we haven't drafted a single word.
We don't have to go through the state for that, or we do have to go through?
We do not.
Okay, so we can handle it.
This is a plug, you gotta go through.
Then I, then I'm fine with that, we keep the classification, we drop anything on green, foot and a half above the crown of the road, to be verified by the, the inspection department, anything in black, foot above the road. That way, people can walk in, there's no, they don't have to even get into this, they can look at this map and go, here I am, right here, foot and a half above the road, makes it easier.
We can get rid of that, to get it going straight.
Now, does that mean that they're still gonna have to go get a survey, and they're gonna still have to get a business shot? Certainly.
Which I, I really think that's.
They need to do that.
To me, that, that gets her out of a bind, the builder out of a bind, to put it on that survey, say you got to be this elevation shot.
Okay.
And it's not that late, Bobby.
No, that's.
They, they just know three or four mile.
I'm paraphrasing, five hundred thousand mile, I don't know.
So, like you, do we have consensus now? I don't know, I'm, I'm waiting, sharing, is that, are you good with that?
I'm good with what Bobby said.
Okay.
I don't understand, basically the same thing, I believe.
I think they did.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm, I'm good, I'm, 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 I'm making, I'm making, I'm making, if, if, if I'm not mistaken, Nick, what you've marked up is what we've done.
Welcome, very, very.
Yes.
I mean, very, almost.
There's a couple things you gotta take out.
Okay, so, we're not changing the requirement for the elevation still, I'll make, now that, for me, that's, okay.
We're not changing the, oh, yeah.
The requirement.
Well, this is pretty much.
For the elevation certificate, we need that.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I do, I think, I do, I, I really think that.
Okay, alright, so we're, I'm, I'm good, I'm not even gonna try to paraphrase, I don't need to, I know what it said.
Okay, dude, alright.
So, Nick, you got, I mean, you, we're sending that to you, and you're good, and we can have it ready for next Tuesday.
Yes.
Alright, can, can I add one more thing, please?
Sure.
Don't, I just forgot it.
Really an important thing.
I know it was.
No, it really was, um.
Mike.
Had to do with you, Nick.
Oh, God, it was a big thing.
And it was a second one, it was.
Yeah.
Alright, nevermind.
That happened, sorry.
I'm getting there, dude.
Okay, uh, we done, I mean, last.
Oh, I know what it was.
Alright, good.
We got people waiting. Literally got a guy, stopped his work at, at a foundation level. Talked with you outside about it not long ago, is there any way that we can give them an okay to go ahead, because we know what we're gonna do, we, we're not doing anything that the state's probably gonna turn out, right? Because we're not really changing anything, except the elevation, they already told us, we can change the five hundred year, it has nothing to do with it, it doesn't have any issue with it. The floodplain manager lady told us that on the phone, would you agree with that?
I don't expect problems, but until they've really done their review.
So we should tell all those people what?
Well, it's changed, it's changed. Um, there, there is no option there, for me, now, legally, from a, from representing this city, to let's change anything we do, we open, we, we're opening can one.
Okay, so how long do you think it's gonna take, do you want to even tell us quickly?
Expedite it as quick as we, if, if we can, as quickly as we can, what would you, what?
How many times do we have to meet again to make it happen?
We allow it, a first reading, a second reading, planning and zoning will look at it, they can look at it anytime in that period, and we could do that concurrently with our first reading.
Can we consolidate those into a week or two, rather than two or three months?
That's why I don't want state law, and look, that one, that doesn't say two or three, two or three months, but it'll, it'll, it'll take a month.
Okay, so we can probably tell these people go ahead for weeks, normal.
No, no, we gotta get the state review first, and, and if, if, if we're lucky, maybe that takes a week, but they say sometimes it takes six weeks, so, I don't know, I'll take it.
So we do our reading before we go to the state?
No, we're gonna send it to the state first, make sure we're not working on adopting something that the state tells us to do.
But we'll see that next Tuesday, correct?
The, the version.
The version that we're gonna send.
And, and it'll look almost just like what you got.
I know it will, but, but it won't be marked up, it'll be what we're gonna send, don't we have to say we're, we need to vote to say, send that to the state officially? Have we done that?
You don't necessarily need to, what we really need to do is, if you might vote on your first or second reading.
Okay. Good. Okay.
But we would want someone who thinks, no, that's not what we intended, not what we set out to, exactly, there's a problem here, this, this sentence is wrong.
Yeah, alright, so what are we getting next Tuesday?
The finalized version of what you got today.
Okay. Then it goes, will it have already gone to the state, or we will see it in our packet before review, is that what, I'm trying to make sure I understand what we're gonna say.
What we're talking about is, you'll see it one more time before we send it to the state, we'll send it to the state that day afternoon.
After that. Okay, we good?
As late as next Tuesday afternoon, we can go to the state.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, thank you everybody for coming. See ya, good see.